Since the chairman is not here, I'll just say all rise. Benton County Commission is now in session. Um, Ms. Roseanne Ward, presiding.
Norman Frazier, would you mind giving our indication, please?
Be on it. Our bow in the place. Mr. Frazier, have we followed to come to you this evening to do the county's business, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with our county, we ask that you be with our community, we ask that you be with our loved ones, Lord. Or especially be with our country in these troubling times. Please give each one of these commissioners wisdom to do the county's business in the way you'd have it done. These things ask in your son's precious name. Amen.
Commissioner Halsman, lead us in the flag of allegiance.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time next to the agenda is a roll call by the county clerk, please. Rochelle Hill.
Here.
Janet Higdon.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Darryl Hicks.
Here.
Ronnie Harper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Angie Hearn.
Here.
Dawn Payton. Dawn Payton. Is he on there? Dana Ferguson.
Here. It might not go that way.
I don't believe he's logged in, sir.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston.
Scotty.
Elena DeHod.
Here.
Norman Frazier.
Here.
Gary Farr.
Here.
Sunny Hall.
Here.
Phil Melton.
Here.
Doug Bickers.
Here.
Ward Plan.
Here.
We have one absent. We have a forum. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ferguson.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bickers. Sorry. He'll be with us. Voice vote, all vote aye. Any opposed? Okay, approved. Next is the citizens' forum. We have to pass that one. Next is commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner that would like to speak?
Commissioner President, District Two. I'll make it brief. I've got two subjects I want to touch on. Mayor, you may be best suited to answer the first question. Uh, we were given a letter dated April 30th. When I say we, the budget committee. It was from a concern of the motel tax. Uh, I'm going to read one line out of the second paragraph. I would like to ask your consideration in sponsoring in our budget passage, a six-month grace slash waiver period of hotel, motel taxes in Benton County. Since this letter, it was described to us by Lord Frazier that we couldn't do that for various reasons. Um, I'm proud of our hotels in Benton County. I want them to know that this subject was talked about. I don't want them to think that it was put away and forgotten about. And budget talked about having our county attorney, Mr. Johnson, to write a letter that would be sent to the gentleman that's asking about hotel, motel, uh, tax rate. That being said, I'm going to yield this subject. While I have the floor, Mayor, I'm sure you will respond to that. There's another subject that I want to talk about. I have a newfound passion for small businesses. I've got quite an education in small business for the last two years. None of us wish this virus upon us. Do county electric in Benton County...
Run, run. Can I make a question?
Yes, Ms. Powers.
Yes, Ms. This is part of our district that can do that.
If you will extend to that microphone in front of the mayor so that they can hear you.
Okay, you want me to stand over there?
Maybe.
On the second subject, I was describing that I have a newfound passion for small businesses. Benton County Electric, sometime back, announced that they were going to, for lack of a better word, cut a little slack to the residents and the businesses in Benton County. That if you can't pay your electric bill, we're not going to disconnect you. I thought that was pretty cool. I liked that. It was announced last week that our electric company is going back to old practices, old procedures, starting tomorrow. If we have a business or residence, I'm more, I'm concerned about everybody, but right now I'm concerned about the businesses, that they're going to go back to disconnected. And my question is, this is a subject that I know a whole lot about. I've been following the electric company. It's going to, this subject probably going to force me to do it if I don't move it forward. But I want to know if there's something that can be done to protect businesses, protect the residents who are affected by this virus, who are fixing to use their electricity. So many places have hundred-foot walk-in cameras, they've got threesters, they've got massive amount of stuff that's got to stay shielded called a fraud. And with that being said, I made a phone call today, and my only option was I could work a payment or info now. So if I own the $500 electric bill for eight years, when I make my main payment, my electric bill is again $500, which my electric bill is about $500, I'm going to have to give them $750. And then in June, I have to give them another $750. Now, if these businesses are still closed and still in trouble, that's really not a whole lot to handle. And I was given another second, uh, round of advice. I could go to the, uh, financial lines. I appreciate that a whole lot coming from the Benton County Electric. That being said, I'm going to say, if anybody's got any good suggestions, good ideas, what we can do to help citizens, help these businesses, please share it, everybody, because I'm going to be forced to get involved in this, so thank you all. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner President. Next is Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes, I've got for the insurance. We had a meeting the end of last month. And we are wanting to continue with Benefits, Inc. We voted on that. The dental and vision coverage is going to remain the same and stays with Blue Cross Blue Shield. The medical health insurance will be changing and new coverage will be with Cigna. This is due to the significant increase Blue Cross was going to require. The county could not afford that kind of hit. Switching medical coverage to Cigna, the employee's insurance remains the same. The employee's premium for the employee-only coverage will remain at $56.04 per month with no increase to the employees' out-of-pocket costs. However, the county's portion will actually decrease. The county would pay $513.16 per employee each month. But with Cigna, the county portion will drop to 506.70 per employee. On average, we have 79 to 80 employees enrolled and actually accepting the county's insurance. The HRA will remain at 80/20 coverage plan. Cigna is willing to switch the annual coverage renewal date from November 1st to July 1st in order to get the insurance plan on the same fiscal schedule as the government and our budget to proceed. During the change in coverage date, Cigna has agreed to honor the employee's current deductible. Therefore, the employees are going to get a 20-month deductible. So I need to, for the whole commission, to vote on this so that they can continue on with it. I make a motion to do that.
I will second that motion. Hill, fifth.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and seconded by Commissioner Hill. Did you have a question?
Yes, should we do that at the end of the meeting and suspend the rules?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest.
Fine. Remind me.
Okay. Commissioner Frazier.
What it is, we have our insurance agents on the phone right now rather than hold them at the end. Is there any questions y'all may have from them while they're on the phone?
One question, one minute. I want to thank the insurance committee. I know how hard y'all have worked on this, a lot of research, a lot of study, a lot of time. The motion, Commissioner Ferguson, was made. Y'all are supporting it. Y'all want me to vote yes on it, on your motion, right?
Yes.
That's all I need to know. I'm going to move back to insurance committee. Thank you all.
If there's any other questions for the insurance guys or anything business-wise, you'd be obliged to do it now, and otherwise we'll vote on it at the end and suspend the rules. Any other questions?
That way we can let them go. They don't have to stay.
I have a question. Howler.
Okay. Who is it?
Ms. Mary Powers.
Okay. Ms. Powers, go ahead, please.
Um, yes, when we were discussing, uh, the last, uh, the last meeting, is it, uh, are you talking about the claim insurance, uh, companies that, uh, you would be able to go to Vanderbilt?
That was a, that was a St. Thomas question. That was when we could get St. Thomas in July, as of June 1st, we have some access to St. Thomas.
Okay, so this is the same company that used to use Vanderbilt?
Not the same company, Ms. Powers, but they are, Vanderbilt isn't part of their, uh, network.
Oh, okay. So that's what, I put through here, um, Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, one player.
Okay.
Uh, on this insurance change, I've, I've not really seen a black and white on it. There's no other thing about it. Uh, does the insurance committee, how they, what, what is their opinion of this when we vote on it?
We voted for it. Everybody in the insurance voted for it, so we agree with it.
The, the night came up, we had four present, and one out, and we had a pass with the four, and the fifth one out. I don't know their personal opinion.
Is it with before the, uh, finance committee?
Was it gone before budget?
Yeah, because we didn't, the budget made before, y'all did, we didn't really know anything.
Yeah, this does not affect the budget. This actually helps it, Mr. Plant.
Yeah.
Uh, so it didn't, due to these COVID reasons, we're not being able to follow exact committee-to-committee information, sir.
Actually, I can interject. The proposal is actually to the mayor. It is their recommendation to the mayor for this plan. I choose the insurance, uh, plan. I do not fund the insurance plan. That's what the budget, uh, package will do in June or July. But the recommendation would actually be to the mayor. I, I'm the one who contractually binds and actually chooses the insurance. And Rocky took a little bit of my thunder weight, but I was going to praise the insurance committee. One of the things that I felt like has been wrong is that the mayor just chooses who they want. And we've got an insurance committee, and we devalue the insurance committee. We devalue the commissioners when you've got a mayor who just decides on what they want to do. So I applaud, y'all have put two good, hard years into this. Uh, we were hoping to try to achieve it last year, but again, that's what times for. Patience was on our side. Y'all have worked diligently, as hard as the budget committee to come up with good plans. It's paid off, and so with the recommendation and approval of the majority of this commission, I am going to do what the insurance committee recommends.
It's also going to be the same as last year, which, you know, tell me anybody whose insurance stays the same from one year to the next.
It, it's also going to help the budget committee and prepare because we're going to change their renewal date. So that, that's a big plus to think about, too. Commissioner Hicks.
I, I can speak for all the budget committee, but I can speak for myself. I, I support what they, what they've done, and they put forth a lot of effort. I, I think we're just taking Mr. Word and vote for it.
We'll do that at the end of the meeting when we suspend the rules.
That's fine.
Any other questions? If not, we're going to move on. Any other questions?
For the insurance, Commissioner Frazier, did you not have some insurance people on the phone that want to speak?
They, they would if you had questions that they needed to answer. We, we came pretty armed tonight, but they wanted to make sure if y'all need to talk directly. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on then. Um, next is the, uh... No, I don't think so. Okay, then we're going to move on from the insurance on to the next, which is the, um, county mayor, our attorney. Does our attorney have anything that you'd like to say or add to that?
No, I mean, I, just as a quick, I don't want to open up the camera, but I just want to let you know that on the mineral severance tax issue, I think I did actually, well, that was a little bit ago, and we had someone from Columbia come and speak. That issue, I'm looking into that issue deeper. I did some additional research. I'll look back to the seventies, uh, this mission, and there may be a way that we should be actually correcting those, uh, revenues. That tax. But I'm waiting on a feedback from the Department of Revenue, whether they agree with the conversation. And if they do, then I'll present it to you all, and we'll try to pursue those warrants. But I, without doing all the research, it is pretty adept. So, but I want to please you all to take it.
I want to, I want to thank you for that.
Mr. Plant, do we have any other speakers here in the audience that was going to say anything?
I notice that, uh, your name is?
Brian Williams.
You have Mr. Williams.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Williams, the commission?
This is dealing with the camera issue. Do I need to speak over you? How do I, how do we want to address that?
Right now, you have the, you know, we yield the floor to you if you'd like to address the chair.
Okay. What brought us to this point? Would be your place.
Okay. Um, I've been doing the IT support for the sheriff's department here in Benton County since, I believe. I look back at my, uh, QuickBooks invoices and it looks like since August of 2011. Uh, I am also doing the IT support for the Camden Police Department as well.
I'm sorry, but you can't, I can't hear.
I can't hear.
Actually, if you would come over here to this.
Get it here. What's this one?
Is that a little bit better?
Let's take a look.
Yes, that's right.
All right. Uh, my name's Brian Williams. I've been, uh, providing the IT support for the Benton County Sheriff's Department since August of 2011. Uh, I've also been doing the IT support for the Camden Police Department for the past couple of years. I'm located out of Hendersonville, Tennessee. I've been in the IT world for, coming up on four years now. Uh, okay, I guess to cut to the chase, the, um, Sheriff's Department, uh, my first day on the job for the Benton County Sheriff's Department was the first day that the jail opened. And I came down and started doing, uh, work for Sheriff Tony King at that time. As I've become more and more, uh, familiar with the layout of the Sheriff's Department IT-wise, and my original job really didn't cover this, but I've taken a little bit of responsibility for their camera system, helping them out, and their access control, helping them out where I can. I do camera systems and so forth, but the Sheriff's Department's a little bit bigger than what I typically worked with. So, the long and the short of it is, the camera system that the Sheriff's Department has is what was installed when that building was built. It's now coming up on 10 years old. It's pretty old, and we've, it's getting to a point where it's difficult to support. And there are some substantial safety issues if something happens there. We've had trouble in this, and this is why we were very fortunate to bring the camera system back up. Case in point, about a month ago, we had the control tower, where the jails managed from, the machine there that they view the cameras from and can view all the cameras in the jail and manage the access to all the doors and so forth. That computer crashed. We don't have spare. We don't have, the only company that we can get that from is SWC out of Kater, Alabama. And it would probably be several days, if not longer, for us to get a replacement computer. I was fortunate enough to have a power supply that I was able to repair that computer with and get it back up and going. But it really would have left, if that had not been the case, it really would have limited how the jail, the corrections officers were able to do their job. The technology that's currently installed at the jail, uh, is older technology. It was actually obsolescent technology when the jail was built. So we now have technology that was obsolescent in 2011, is now 10 years old. We really need, the Benton County Sheriff's Office, the jail, needs a new camera system. And I'm, I'm going to take any questions and tell you anything I can do to, to help.
I got a question for you. Have you been in touch with our IT guy that's, uh, we appointed him with IT? And does he know about all this?
My understanding is he's not the IT guy for the jail.
I can't hear the question.
Mr. Harper wanted to know if, um, Mr. Williams had been in touch with, um, our IT guy, Mr. Scott Hill? That was the question.
Uh, we have had some communication, but this is not, my understanding, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, this is not his responsibility.
Well, it's all, it's all our responsibility. So we, you know, we, we've got to make communication, that's all we've got to do.
Okay. There has been some communication. He does not, and I'll just say, I take care of the jails and the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. I'm not sure what his responsibilities are.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
If it worked five years ago, what's the matter with it today?
I actually have to ask something. On the, you said when the jail was built in 2011, that the technology was installed in, was already, that was already in town?
It's, it was older technology at that time.
Older or obsolete or something?
Obsolescent. I'm, I'm not going to say it's obsolete.
But it was on its way out.
It was way out. Yes.
Was that a concern broad at the time, or, you know? I know you said you started working on it.
My first day was, was that day, and I wasn't even doing, taking care of the cameras at that point. You had a year warranty with SWC, the original installer, that they put in. At that point, after the year, Sheriff King came to me and he was saying, "We've got a," I forget how much it was, I believe it was approximately $30,000 fee for maintenance going forward, which the county did not have at that time. I mean, well, it was the first year, now it's, it's far more than that now.
Powers, I have a question. Okay. Um, Ms. Powers, um, you've got the floor.
You stated that when the building was built, the camera system that was put in was old. Just like that, you basically put an old camera system in a new jail.
The commissioners did.
If I could interject a little bit, uh, and get a little bit of a background on this. Since I've been taking care of the jail, I learned a little bit about the industry, about the, the jail security access, control, access management industry. In our area, the 800-pound gorilla of that business is SWC. They're out of Kater, Alabama. And they are very large, uh, the part that's down there, the division that's down there, takes care of their corrections and their hospitals. What they do for installs and the equipment that are in jails and hospitals. I've talked to several other sheriffs in this area since then. And pretty much the first question out of their mouth is, can you work on our SWC equipment? It seems like you're not the only county that kind of walked through this. SWC generally will install older, reliable equipment, but it's older equipment. And they almost always get the bid because they're going to be a little dollar, because of that. That they're very proprietary and they're very expensive. And that's where we are now, is you have a camera system that we can't buy, we can go out and buy individual cameras and replace those individual cameras. And we've done so on a number of occasions. But the recorders, the management software are all very proprietary. It has SWC software on it. We can't make changes to that, or we break, we break what did. And that's what we're trying to fix, what we need to fix going forward, is we need to find a provider, somebody who will come in, replace this camera system, give us something that has commodity hardware, and that we, if two years from now we don't want to deal with that vendor, we can go get another vendor, and we're not going to have to get our whole camera system all over again.
Brian, I'll start out by thanking you for being here and explaining this to where we can understand it. Resolution 15 is, uh, is intended for us to take action. That's the estimate by SWC, Southwestern Communications in Jackson. I know that you hadn't had your from standing by every Friday. What is your, are you asking us to take action and support the estimate with the Jackson company? Or are we to, are you going to ask us to, uh?
Right now, and I don't want to, to get out of turn or anything, we've had several, we've contacted several companies about replacing the camera system. Of the original three that we contacted, they all showed up, but after, one of them immediately said, "That's bigger than we wanted." The second one, after about a month, came back and said, "We're not sure we can integrate your camera system with your access control system. Put a new camera system in and make it work with your existing access control system." Third one is Townsend Systems out of Jackson. They say they can do it. Um, my understanding, are you the person that brought the, uh, Stanley to the?
I made him to the Henry County.
Thank you for doing so. Thank you for doing so because that's really, probably young people are our vendors. But I think they, they have more experience at this. I think they, they have more experience at this than we have in the other vendors. Stanley, currently, after talking to Matt, the sales engineer who came down here on Friday, they have fourteen other jails that they've done in the state of Tennessee. They've done the Davidson County Jail, they've done the Rutherford County Jail. They are good at this.
Very large populations.
Very large populations. Yes, Matt?
I have a question. Have they replaced SWC in other jails?
Yes, they have. And so, he's very familiar with SWC's product. He knows basically what they do and how they do it. They're currently doing a replacement for Secauci County, Tennessee, of the East Tennessee. And his comment when he walked in the building was, this is very familiar, similar to the layout, and I want to say it was Secauci County. I know that, I believe that's what he says, I mean, he's, they're familiar with the same layout. And as a, just, as a kind of an ad boy or whatever, he said that we have the best small jail he's ever been in.
And the cleanest.
And the cleanest jail we've ever been in, he's ever been in, so.
You said that SWC is proprietary, and also that's what we have now, and we have those maintenance contracts for, it was annually, is there, when did those stop?
No, we've, we've never done a maintenance contract.
So, they've also, we didn't take that?
That's correct, that's correct. We, we kind of, when Sheriff King and I were talking about this, he didn't believe the county had the money. And we kind of did a little bit of math and math and figured out that for the first several years, we'd probably be okay. After that, we start taking our chances. We're gonna have a increased likelihood of machines or equipment failing, and none of it's expensive.
Those of you who want to ask us about that, is it proprietary, since the county's probably having someone else work on it? And did that violate the original proprietary and attempted to?
I'm not going in and making any changes. I'm replacing commodity hardware at the camera, but I'm not doing anything.
I've never seen the brief that's written because from years ago, so I was curious.
Well, there is no maintenance agreement.
Oh, the original, I mean, proprietary.
That, that's actually a good question, but it's.
We need to be careful about that.
Did you say you don't lose the money in terms of?
I do what I can, okay? I replace cameras, I fix cameras, if there's a power issue. I try to fix, I'm, I'm good at fixing problems that come with technology. And, but I'm, they have recorders over there that are coming up on ten years old, and I'm just amazed that they're still working.
Again, if you got a good product, ten years, you just start that.
That's true. But if you have cameras and a recorder where it's hard for us to get, really get visual on it, it's, something needs to be fixed. Yes, sir?
My question is, is, are you on a contract? So, you're not on a contract?
That's correct.
So, you're really at the sheriff's discretion is what you are, right?
That is true.
Or assume that you, or you'll be under the sheriff's discretion?
I'm a timely material person.
So, anything financial for the sheriff, if it's not in his budget, it goes to me.
Okay.
I'm the purchasing agent for the county.
Okay.
And so, one of the first things we did, because we know the future is all about business. So, we went and we appointed an IT director. Now, his job isn't necessarily to fix things, he can fix things if he wants. But he is who we trust. But we're not gonna trust a business person of any nature until it flows through the proper bidding, I guess you could say, you know? So, so the reason he is important is because he is the commission's and the mayor's eyes and ears. We're gonna trust him and his recommendations. So, so the sheriff has let me and him out of this process. This is not a budgetary issue that he is talking about. This is a capital expenditure that has to be bidded out, over ten thousand dollars. Anything he does, even if it's in his budget, if it's over ten thousand dollars, will flow through a bidding process, a capital process.
Okay.
Ultimately, we'll have my blessing. So, and it's only because of design. Now, the highway and the schools, they have their own autonomy to be able to bid. He flows through me. So, the reason we want our IT director on here, we just want him to have an understanding because ultimately, if there's any bid process, he will like the specs for that bidding. So, it's important that technology issues will flow through the county IT director, just as a legal issue would flow through our county attorney. So, second, you're not under a contract, so we assume that you're, you're the person for this. Now, you have a lot of experience, and of course, we would probably go with the recommendation to keep you on, hey? You've got that, we want you on there, you've got. But still, it's everything comes at a price. And so, I'm sure there's other, Brian Williams is out there, you know?
Gotta hook him up.
Well, because you know what I'm saying, people who offer the same service.
Yes, yes.
And, and product. And, and so that's where we are. So, we've got two major issues. We've got a new system that we have to look at and process. And I believe due to the age, and you've said technology is old, I believe most people are probably in agreement that the system would need to be upgraded and replaced. Of course, that's an expensive issue. People like to spec for that. My office will put out the bids, all bids will come back into my office and we'll make a determination. If the sheriff is doing his job, he's sitting in my office, just working with me, saying, Mayor, this is what I do. This is what I'm recommending, you know? Ultimately, the choice would be your recommendation of what the best offer is. But this is not a process that I'm not familiar with, okay? I handle over three hundred and thirty million dollars in hardware expense. This is what I do, is this exact process. There's nobody in this county that probably will have more knowledge or experience in that. So, I'm more worried about ensuring that the county gets the most for the least, you know?
Yeah, no, I certainly understand.
And so, so the reason for bidding is, we, we have gone on this relationship with you not contractually bound to do that, you know? So, until you convince me or convince our IT director, so that we can convince the county commission, you're a businessman, buying for county business. And ultimately, we will make that determination. So, we're gonna probably go with this process a little longer, and we're gonna determine whether, what time, probably not proprietary. We may want you very involved in the process. You may want to offer us some type of service contract specifically for the jail, specific for the jail. But still, it's gonna flow through IP. And we're gonna make sure that IP or IT director has written up the proper specs, accurate specs that we can bid out for that. Because if you charge us over ten thousand dollars for your particular arrangement with us, again, we may look for multiple Brian Williams to come in here and, and offer that particular proposal. But ultimately, this is gonna go through the bid process. And it's gonna be a large capital expenditure. So, that's why we're, we're doing our due diligence.
Oh, I, I, that's what I agree with.
That we've got our ducks in a row. But, but like I said, I'm, I'm more worried that you're not under a contract, that there is no set fee, that there, we're at the mercy of whatever you charge to, to repair things. And so, if we continue any relationship with you, I'm gonna ask for some type of proposal, you know, service contract to provide us for what you do. And, but like I say, at the end of the day, there's a reason why we bid what we bid.
Oh, I know.
He, he's going to convey his recommendations. He's not the one all be all authority, but he's simply what we call a representative, a non-bi- representative. He's not gonna bid, he's not gonna use his own personal, whatever. He's simply trying to say, this is what you need, this is what the evaluations say, you know, and I'll help you go out and solicit multiple bids for this. Mr. Preston found a good one, but, but still, when we bid these, this many, we want three to five bidders on this particular project. The original agreement, or the original proposal to us was almost literally four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're looking at a hundred and two thousand dollars for outdoor, which is, this is so vague that there's no telling what was technically on that. And we, this was proposed to us, there's one three hundred and thirty-four thousand hundred and then a hundred and two. So, you're lucky, four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars was proposed to us with two thin pieces of paper. I mean, to me, anything disvaluable comes basically as stacked activity, very detailed, you know? And so, that's why we're going to make sure we do our due diligence. I'd love for you to be involved in that, so you do have subject matter expertise, you probably have a great service. But if we're going to continue our relationship with you, we need something more detailed, more concrete, because they make financial decisions on this single, about every month since, you know? And so, it'll take us another sixty, ninety days to finish this process.
I certainly expect that you're coming up on the end of your budget here. I don't expect anything to, to happen next week or tomorrow.
Do you have anything else to add? Okay. I'd like to recognize Sheriff Firster, please, he's asking.
I'm gonna try to clear up a couple of things. First, Mr. Williams is not trying to get our contact, that's not what he does. He's just been doing our IT work for a long time, and he has saved us counting thousands of dollars by putting together things that we wouldn't have been doing, using his own equipment and everything else, and he's come in.
I can't give anybody this signal. I'm gonna leave.
Now, only that one.
That's what the speaker's told. Why don't we, my sheriff, I'm gonna try to test.
Just bear with us, we're moving the microphone so you can hear better.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams has been doing our IT work as long as I've been sheriff before, and he's saved us lots of money. He's not trying to sell us product tonight. He's been of his own accord, been trying to help us figure out a solution to what we've got, and he has helped us get bids. To clear up what Mr. Potter was asking a lot about, Brian Williams and Scott Hill met at my office and went down and looked it all over together, so that they, they both had an opinion on what was going on, what we needed to do. So, he, Scott's been involved in this, and I'm glad he is, because that keeps everything above the waters for what to do. The proposal I brought up here last time is all that I was given, when the other two backed out on us and said they wouldn't do it. That's all they gave us. It is vague. My only thing in last meeting, if we have to do something pretty quick before this thing goes down, we don't want to get stuck to the thing that the people that we're dealing with now, a lot of our TDOC people that we've got now, our state inmates that we're getting paid for, we're also getting paid for some out of the area down around Chattanooga and Dyersburg, where they've had to do work and stuff on their jail, and they're having to pay us state rate, forty dollars a day per inmate, plus the transportation back and forth to court and everything. We don't want something to happen and our system to go down back there, and then we'll be that person having to do that. I just want us to move on, I don't care who does the contract or whatever. It doesn't have to be, it's not my money, I just tell them we need to get it fixed. I don't want us to get in a situation where, as I said last month, something happens back there in that jail and we don't have that camera system to back us up. We're also having problems with our door locks and stuff back there. We've got another one that, if they go in and out back there in the jail, they'll have to call me in my office, I gotta get them, reclose my door in one of my offices two or three times to get it to kick back in, so that they can get in and out of there, through one of the doors, not all of them. So, I just want to clarify, Brian has been doing an excellent job for us. He was there before I came in, he comes down, he can have me call him, he's, he's got out on his own and tried to help us get bids, he's took his time to come down here and make the scope, and, you know, I appreciate what he's doing. So, as far as the bidding process, if anybody wants to, I just urge you, let's make as quick a decision as we can, because if this system goes down, I'm gonna have to call TDOC and tell them our cameras aren't working, and then I don't know what they're gonna tell me from there. You may have, you may have a better idea, they might give us a certain amount of time to get it fixed, but even then, no matter what happens in that jail, we don't have a camera system. And if our door locks are giving us trouble, and they're gonna get worse, they're not gonna get better. And SWC is gonna charge a ridiculous amount just to come up there and work on everyone's door. But if we've got inmates back there and heaven forbid something happened, we need to get them out, and door locks don't work, what we're gonna be at then is just a system that's failing that we need to fix. That's all I'll say about it. I, I do want to thank Brian for taking the time and coming up here tonight, because he's just simply trying to guide us in the right direction. He's not trying to sell us anything. He's been there for us every time we've called. And Scott was good enough to come down and look it over, and that's what y'all wanted him to do. They came in and then Scott come back in my office, and Sonny was there, and, you know, and he said, I think y'all done your part, talking about my part, we've got out and got what bids you should bid, we'll see what bids we can get. It's just gonna be, what are we gonna do on it? What's the county commission wanna do on it? And it's gonna be expensive any way we go. Even on our best bid, it's gonna be a lot of money. But we do have, and I don't know how y'all want funding or anything, but we do have jail litigation money, and I know we don't wanna spend on that, but I don't wanna spend my money on my electoral, but I have to, that's, that's all I got to say. I just want to clarify, Brian is, is not trying to sell us anything, and Brian has been there for us, and he's saved us a lot of money.
Sheriff, just got a question, please. And I may be completely off on this. The security system you've got there, the cameras and all that, are they anything like what the school system has? I know the school system has a very updated, you know, very elite system there, where they monitor the schools on cameras, you know, they can see all, all the schools, they can see the park lots, they can see it everywhere. Are those any two type the same?
Ours do the same thing that theirs do, but for a system, I, I don't know, I, I have no idea on this stuff, I'm totally, I need to know this.
You have an integrated system with the jail. It is on some thing. One of the complexities of the jail system is that the, you can click on a placement screen, you can pull up a camera, but on that same place, you can also manipulate the doors. It's all tied in together. It's a far more complex system than what you see at the schools. The schools, you just have a camera system, and it's, the cameras, the school, it's had right now, from what I'm seeing, are better than what we have at the jails.
Do your doors open one at a time, or can you pop all of them at the same time?
To my, not really my, my doors, so to speak, but my understanding is, you can only do one door at a time, okay? And there are places where, if you have a hallway, one door has to close before the next one opens.
And what, again, to emphasize this, is this is multi-hundred-thousand-dollar deal.
Absolutely.
And so, what we, what I would like to see, just being CFO, is I would like to see some type of relationship between us and you. Obviously, you've got an enormous amount of experience, we're not relying upon Mr. Scott Hill to know it all, he's just kind, he, he's a conduit of being able to light up an effective bid spec and get this solicited out. So, and that's something that we would probably pay you for, if you believe that, that... So, and that's something that we would probably pay you for, if you believe that, that you are, this is down here for you and you could write us good specs.
I would be willing to assist in any way.
But we will pay you for it, that's what I'm saying, but we would, and, and that's why I say, that's why we kinda need a relationship with you. I'm not against it being a sheriff's specific IP, but ultimately, things flow up higher than that, you know, there's, there's processes that we go through.
Certainly.
But in the bid, this is the complicated part, when you're talking about this much money, you're supposed to have an independent government estimate, and if we invite too many people in to see the system, and they're gonna turn around and bid on the system, there is sometimes a reason for protest, meaning, ah, you kinda have an inside track, you know, you were more understanding that by things. So, we got, there's still a process to work for when we invite people to come in to, to, to give us an evaluation so that we can write the specs.
Certainly.
And once we write the specs, one thing that I would like to see in that is, they may give us a five-year guarantee, they may give us, without it being a spec, they can say, we'll throw in a thirty-six month monitoring service, you see? So, this is why it's important that we, we get a good write-up, look it out. They can always go over and beyond what we ask, and that's why going with SWC without having to interchange the system yet is not advantageous. We need to get the system in place, and then that monitoring, maintenance, oversight of it. So, so, I'm gonna say after this is over, you know, my car, Scott, whatever, we, we won't wanna work with you, but, yeah, we wanna pay you for your expertise. But I would also suggest that the sheriff and me, you know, we, he's your man, he's got so much knowledge for that, you help our IT records, you're kind of a sub maybe through that. I would prefer to have a written set of, of contractual relationship with you sometime, you know, rates are important, you know, uh, uh, you know, what's it gonna cost us for this, or are you gonna throw in that? And so, that's why we need some type of formal, formal relationship with you. So, we'll, we'll talk more about that, but Sheriff, this is probably, you know, we'll, the litigation money is where this comes, we've got the money to do this. That's, I don't believe that's gonna be the problem. What we wanna do is, of course, get you the most.
Best thing for us.
For, for, for the lead, and sometimes we could actually take a higher bid if it gives us more caveats to work with, but, uh, at the end of the day, first things first, we gotta get the specs. We have got to have something to go to the newspapers and advertising with. That takes, they gotta have a time to come in and say, hey, Sheriff, can I come see you today? You know, we may have, one, we may have ten people interested in that process, we're gonna need your patience to be able to let each one of these in, let them see the system through itself. Uh, I figure if we have a June thirtieth deadline and a word like on July the tenth, you know, you may have to, for about sixty days, if we get through sixty days, I think we can have something in there by August first, depending on how long this process takes of that jail.
I just want to be headed in the right way. And can I say this before we go on further? I really would appreciate if the county commissioners would come down sometime, been invited for six years, let us walk you through that jail when this COVID thing is over, so that you have a general idea of what we talk, about what we're talking about. Commissioner Frazier's been down there a couple of times, and he's been a real asset because he was able to, to guide us on, uh, with the, with the water system, and, and came down and assisted with this, Rocky come down there and went, Godspeed. I want y'all to be involved. I just, I think if you come down and let us walk you through the jail magistrate and show you, uh, show you what we're doing, I think you'll have a better understanding of what we're talking about, because we're not good at explaining something, I can't explain something that I don't know much about, but I do know that jail, and I know that if I was on the outside and had never been in the jails, I wouldn't have a clue about what you're talking about on these systems. And it's, it's pretty interesting, and I think the ones that hadn't been there, uh, I think you'd be very, very proud of this jail. It's, it's like a mini-prison, and we got that in our Bick County. It's, it's very impressive, and our jail magistrate has done an excellent job, as he said a while ago, who's committed, a guy who goes into a lot of jails, it being clean and smelling good, they just don't get that in most of these jails, so that's a lot of work that's done that's happened. I wish y'all would come down sometime and just look at it.
Commissioner Frazier has had his hand up, and then I think we've spent enough time on this, we need to move on. Commissioner Frazier.
Just a moment, please, give me just a brief second to make, I've got something I can add and make everybody feel a little bit better.
Okay.
What I've got is, you'll probably pony off on to him anyway.
Okay, Commissioner Frazier.
Just so, so y'all know, as proper chairman, Rocky Preston contacted me about a contractor he had coming in to look at this, has done several loads of jails, and I think Brian mentioned some of that. Uh, I toured this with my IT guy some time ago, Rochelle was around at that time. My guy has done Decatur County Jail, SWC, and stuff like that. He's a no-bid, and he does big systems too. He walked away from this, won't even talk to me about it now. So, if you haven't done SWC work, I don't want you on the property, I'll tell you that right now. I'm not gonna waste my time with you. All right, now, listen, this Stanley guy come in, when I first met Brian, Brian and I haven't talked since then to speak of, I didn't care for Brian, okay? And he hadn't done a third thing to me, his body language just set me backwards, but I'm here to tell you, I toured the facility with him and Stanley guy Matt, and I got a lot of respect for this guy and what he does for us, okay? Let me tell you, he come in and disclosed everything he needed to tell me about the other bid, we went through the cabinets, the Stanley guy went through the cabinets, they two tag teamed the cabinets, what we could rape out of the cabinets and reuse, repurpose, to save us money. I'm very anxious to see this bid from Stanley, and we can get other bids, but if they ain't done SWC, please don't bring them to the facility. That's all I've got to say.
Commissioner President.
Hello, Chair Powers.
I'm gonna start by saying.
Just one second, Ms. Powers, and you'll be next.
I'm gonna start by saying that I had the sheriff's permission to get involved in this subject. The, the man from Stanley that's been mentioned, his name is Matt Hader, he's a sales engineer for Stanley Black and Decker, I think they're two hundred and twenty on the Fortune five hundred club. They don't need to come down here and, and put their hooks in Bick County and take our money. I'm convinced, I think, I'm convinced they're good. I'm just gonna give you a few facts. In North America, they have seven hundred, uh, installations of detention centers. There, in the United States, they have one-fourth of the detention centers. Brian mentioned earlier, in the state of Tennessee, thirteen counties, Wedslow, Davidson, Franklin, Granger, Grunkie, Hawkins, Jerkison, Marion, Merrick, Maury, Olden, Rutherford, Kwashi, and Stewart County. They're also figures who receive money from Houston County, that's the county just below Stewart County, and I have here a bid for ninety-six thousand dollars that they're gonna be doing in Henry County, that's how we regularly come about this man's name. They have a tech stationed in Murfreesboro, so if there's failure in the system they installed at the county jail, the tech will be coming from Murfreesboro. This man drove six hours from the outside of Indianapolis, Indiana. He, I emailed him the estimate from, uh, the company from Jackson County. I emailed the estimate, and it's not a bid, it's just an estimate, and, and within fifteen minutes, and this should make everybody feel better, I know Sheriff, everybody's concerned about the money, we don't know what the future holds for us, but he described to me that the estimate that he saw, when it was coming from Jackson, he could cut it in half. After he learned that our jail was sixty bidders less than Henry County, he said, I can do better than that. So, now, he's, he can't give an estimate in two days, he's working on the estimate, let's just all look forward to, uh, the, uh, receipt, and I'll just get a copy of it and look at it over. That's being said on the way over.
Ms. Powers, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. I would like to hear, uh, Scott Hill, uh, who he did go through and walk through the jail, and, and, uh, I'd like to, um, I'd like to hear from him.
Thanks, Mayor, you're welcome. Hugh.
So, yes, I, I did, uh, walk through the jail with Mr. Brian. Um, I was there when the system was actually originally built. Uh, I was Tony King's, uh, IT guy, and then me and Mr. King didn't see eye to eye on a lot of things, and he got Mr. Williams, that's fine. Uh, it was kind of hilarious, because when I went to the control tower, I actually saw one of the original computers I installed that was still there. Uh, so, Mr. Brian, uh, is, is very truthful in, in saying that the system is old. I wouldn't say it was antiquated when it was installed, I would say that it was not the newest technology there, but it was still technology that was still good. Um, of course, now that ten years has, has elapsed, you know, it is getting older. Uh, I know the school systems, we were talking about those, the, the school systems uses what's called an IP camera system, it's a much newer technology, and it was pretty well in its infancy back eleven years ago, that's why they opted not to put it into our new jail, they went with a more reliable technology, uh, for that era. Now, we've gone into it, it's now obsolete, and the IP camera systems is the new standard. I do believe that we need to, uh, upgrade the system. I also, I like the idea of having the cameras integrated with the door controls, although finding companies that can do both are hard to come by, and we don't really want to go into a proprietary system. I am firmly with Mr. Williams on this of, we need to stay away from proprietary, because that's where you get into very expensive systems that you don't wanna pay for. It's much easier to get non-proprietary systems, and then we can, you know, if we don't like somebody, we can go with somebody else, and they can still work on the same systems. The only thing that I, I start to question is licensing. So, my company SCR does not do cameras or door controls, because we don't have a state license to do so. So, we have to really be careful with who we get and make sure that they are licensed in the state of Tennessee. That is something I have run into, because I've talked to several people, they're like, oh, we can do it, we can do it. Great, what's your license number? I go, look them up in the system, there is no license. You wanna talk about a lawsuit, Mr. Johnson, or, Mr. Johnson does not want to have to bail us out or something, because we've gotten, you know, Joe Blow down the street with no licensing on cameras here or anything like that. So, we definitely wanna make sure we vet our people. Other than that, if y'all have any questions, I can answer it, but I, I'm, I'm with Mr. Williams on, on, we definitely need to do an upgrade. I just don't know about the, the money situation on that, because it seems a little steep in my eyes, but if, if Stanley can, can come up with half the price, that sounds more reasonable.
I have a question. What kind of timeline, I'm sorry, Doug Pickers, fourth district, what kind of timeline are we looking at as far as putting together the package, do you think?
I don't have a good answer on that. Uh, it really just depends on the bid specs. Uh, I know after I met with Mr. Williams, I asked him for a copy of what Townsend Systems bid on. Apparently, they were kind of in a rush and they didn't have that, they just kinda flew by the seat of the pants, I guess you could say, you know, for that instance, he said he was gonna get back with me. Uh, we have not talked since, I, we both are, are very busy people. Uh, I believe we're gonna have others bid on the, the package, we can probably come up with one soon, but I, I can't give you a hard date on that.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Hill? Okay. Yes, uh, Mayor Oscar.
I just wanna wrap up the mayor's part, but, uh, I'm, I'm, well, I'm still hot, I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Williams, for being here. Uh, I'm sure our relationship's gonna continue, uh, you know, we would like for you to be thinking about writing up the specs, you know, about, and, and we'll write it where there's option A and an option B. I mean, they, of course, they can go over and beyond what they want, but I do believe this is the time to probably look at whatever the sheriff needs to redo that system, whether we system and cameras, system only, cameras only, we'll all talk, and we'll coordinate that, and we'll get you a good, a good set specs going forward.
When we take these bids, about four years ago, uh, the county commission voted the money to put that fence up around the back right there, it'd be a good time to go ahead and that way it's all going to lean together, uh, the camera system's gonna hold that fence up all the time.
Containment fence.
Yes, and so, we need to, we need to let them know that that's something everybody will add to that.
We've got that, we could probably possibly bid that on another, a separate bid, whatever, but we'll eventually have to link in to this system, so we'll need to, again, have that, coming back at a later date, we can probably do that function. But, again, thank you for being here, you're very helpful.
Are there any other questions before, I'm, I've got a lot of a couple hours, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I just wanna say, addressing Mr. President's inquiry, we did get a, an inquiry from a business owner, uh, concerned about the hotel motel, this was in the high level, things were, were going down, and he asked me to present that, uh, to the committee. As we look at the parameters of whether that process is legal or not, I personally don't think, there needs to be more clarity to his letter. Is, is he asking for forgiveness for six months and make up a back payment, or are they just asking for complete forgiveness of the hotel motel tax? And I believe that would be illegal, we would have to repeal that tax, I don't, I don't see that we could even go, go through with that particular function. But as, uh, you know, Mr. President was saying, you know, we're trying to help our business community, and that's something that he wanted to propose, uh, most of the times at stake, and the feds have gotten involved as far as when it comes to this COVID nineteen, about how best to assist our business community, but from the local aspect, you know, there are avenues that sometimes you can pursue as a local body, and that's probably one of them, but I think the complication of that is probably gonna rule that out. But, but we'll talk more about that, and we'll learn a little bit about what could or could not be done, just for future purposes. Now, talking about Bick County Electric, uh, I'm, I'm also, Sheriff, you're concerned, I know that there's policies, but sometimes there's exceptions to policies, and I believe when it comes to the COVID nineteen, we've never had to make exceptions to policies like we have seen on mass scale than we have in the last sixty days. So, I, I would encourage you to attend the Bick County Electric Board, uh, Board of Public Utilities Board meeting, it is the fourth Tuesday of every month. Uh, these are issues that need to be weighed in on, because I was upset that when people were losing jobs at such an escalating scale, not a gradual scale, that those are times for exception to policy, and those are times for the electric company, which is owned by citizens, to step up and probably, uh, be, have more leniency in their policy, or either make up new policies and say, listen, sometimes it's not about an individual, an individual goes to the Bick County Ministerial Alliance for assistance, but could a local business establishment, probably not, you know?
But now, they can only do it one time in a twelve-month period.
And that's why we need more weigh-in, because even the, the ministerial lines is really, uh, is this a legal process, but you know, so much is donated to the ministerial alliance from the electric company to turn around and, in, in the end, really pay itself back for these bills. So, so these are, there are cases that I believe, when people are hurting the way they are, when you have what you call such a mass, quick layoff of jobs, that hurts a lot of people, and, but there's opportunity here, and the only way we're gonna get this opportunity is to show up at the Board of Public Utility meetings, express these concerns, because, again, we think about the individuals, but we don't think about the business, and coolers, uh, our restaurants with food in their freezers, and, you know, I mean, it could be a huge impact, and they probably get insurance claims from that, but, again, if, if, if a business owner is willing to say, hey, I'll make up the difference in time, then this is an excellent opportunity for the county commission to really promote helping our business community, so I want to say that. Talking about the budget, uh, honestly, Bick County, the budget committee is, every year, at every meeting, it's better and better and better, they work so hard, you're gonna have the best budget this county's put forth, uh, in a long, long time, but when it comes to our financial picture, Bick County's financial picture, even with this downturn, is better than it's ever been, okay? Now, we don't know what the future is gonna hold, but even with all the But even with all the COVID-19 economic downturns, Benton County had an upturn, both in March and in April. So, so right now economically, things are better for our county. And there's probably ninety-four other counties that may not be able to say that. But Benton County's financial picture is better even after March and even after April. So, that's, that's reason to be optimistic coming in the next year. But we still don't know how long this is going to go and we don't know whether there's going to be a relapse. But we got those numbers in the other day and I thought that was important to relay to you. So, again, appreciate the sheriff inviting, you know, Mr. Williams here. That's very good information. We're learning more about this and we're going to move on this, we know it's an urgent matter. So, but we're going to do it right. At the end of the day, this is a multi-hundred thousand dollar decision and we all have our processes in this. So, uh, but we're going to do it right at the end of the day. I'm just going to pull.
Okay, I guess we need to move on to the next, uh, business is approval of the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Ferguson, do I have a second? Commissioner Hall? All members vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Next is the, the report of the public utilities, new motion.
Motion.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Second.
Commissioner Hill? All votes vote, all vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, number eleven, on the agenda is the approval of the release of the trustee of Benton County from the two thousand and eighteen tax aggregate. Okay. I'll just move over so they can hear your bed.
Motion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Frasier, third.
Commissioner Frasier, second. Commissioner Ferguson? Uh, roll call, roll please, Ms. Clark. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Hickton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Dawn Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Di?
Yes.
Norman Frasier?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Motion passed. On to the next one is the resolution following the executive order number sixteen of the governor of the state of Tennessee.
No.
You skipped the rehabilitation.
Okay, I'm sorry. Approval, approval of the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center quarter living court. I have a motion.
Motion.
Ferguson, second. Commissioner Patton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
So, ask, ask me what you're talking for.
Okay, uh, we had someone speak up over the telephone. Was that a, an aye or a no?
There was an aye.
Did we have anyone that's listening by phone vote no on that last resolution? Okay, then we're going to move on, um, yeah. So, that motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to number thirteen. The resolution following the executive order number sixteen of the governor of the state of Tennessee, the Honorable Bill Lee issued on the twenty-third of March, that the electronic participation shall be allowed and the participants are hereby encouraged to conduct all county meetings electronically because it is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare of the lot, of the said pandemic virus.
Motion.
Okay, Commissioner Patton made the motion, we have a second. Commissioner Ferguson? All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number fourteen is the resolution of Benton County Board of Education Federal Projects Fund.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Patton. All in favor, vote aye?
Can we combine?
Wrong.
We've already got a motion, a second. Anybody opposed? If not, motion carries. Did you want to put some of those together?
I was going to try to do, um, three, four. I think five we can do, can we? Six. Seven.
I think you go all the way down to ten.
Okay, eight. Nine. Ten.
Okay. Do we have a motion to combine? Number three, by Commissioner Hicks, makes a motion to combine.
I was second.
Commissioner Hill? Okay, we're combining resolution three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Voice vote, um, do all approve to combine those?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to vote to approve resolution three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Y'all want me to read each one of those? Just move on.
I think we can read it for ourselves, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Hicks doesn't want us to read those, so we're going to move right on.
Motion to approve is combined.
Yes, okay. I think we probably need to take a roll call vote on those. Let's take a roll call vote on.
Yes, second.
Second?
We've already got a second. Okay, now, we're, we're voting to approve resolutions number three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten on the agenda. Roll call, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Hickton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Dawn Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Di?
Yes.
Norman Frasier?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Okay, motion passes. Then we move on to number twenty.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Could you please tell me who made the motion and the second to approve it combined or is that?
Okay. Frasier and Ferguson. Frasier and Ferguson made the motion to combine.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, now we're moving on to number twenty-three on the agenda. It's resolution transferring funds in the amount of four thousand dollars within the animal shelter budget to cover the part-time payroll for the remainder of the fiscal year. Do we have a motion?
No.
Commissioner Hall? Second?
Second.
Commissioner Ferguson? We'll take a roll call vote on that, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Hickton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Dawn Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Di?
Yes.
Norman Frasier?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Okay, motion passes. Um, just to clarify something, I know some of these resolutions say voice vote, but because of the electronic voting and, and using the telephone and all that, the mayor and I think it's best to have a roll call vote on these. So, that's why we're going to do that.
The sheriff wanted me to, to let y'all know we had to step out because somebody got stabbed somewhere. I don't know what, nothing, law officer, but he wanted me to tell you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to number twenty-four. Resolution transferring funds in the amount of three hundred and thirty dollars within the health department budget to, in order to cover the custodial payroll line from the, from line item for the remainder of the fiscal year. Have a motion?
Motion, Frasier.
Frasier, second?
Second.
Hall? Okay, roll call vote, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Hickton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Dawn Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Di?
Yes.
Norman Frasier?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plan? Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone asleep?
Anyone wish to change their vote? Okay, motion passes. Number twenty-five on the agenda, resolution transferring funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars within the county general funds from function five, six, nine hundred to function five, one, eighteen in order to pay outstanding invoices received from Heath, Coke, and Davis.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hicks?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill. Roll call vote, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Hickton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Dawn Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Di?
Yes.
Norman Frasier?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion passes. Paying number twenty-six on our agenda is a resolution transferring funds in the amount of five hundred dollars within the veteran service officer's budget in order to cover the payroll for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ferguson, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Roll call vote, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Hickton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Mary Powers? Ms. Powers, are you there?
Yes, um, I, my battery is running very low, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Dawn Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Di?
Yes.
Norman Frasier?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? This motion carries. Moving on to number twenty-seven on the agenda. Resolution asking for either an appropriation from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in the amount of thirteen thousand, eighty dollars and twenty-six cents in budgeting the funds within the jail budget for a maintenance agreement on the camera slash secure door system.
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Chairman, I believe that the sheriff wished to withdraw this resolution so that the proper spec and bidding procedures can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Then we have, uh, the sheriff has asked that we withdraw that resolution. Okay, number twenty-eight on the agenda, resolution to appropriate the funds in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and seven cents from the jail courthouse workhouse litigation tax reserve account in order to upgrade cabling at the jail building and budget within the other public safety building improvements budget.
Motion.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Second.
Commissioner Hicks? Do you have any questions?
Yes, what, what is this to, to do? Is it something you to do to the jail or, or is it a whole thing to up a lot, real quick?
Uh, can anybody answer that?
Um, the sheriff is not here, can I be allowed to answer on his behalf of this?
The sheriff is not here, so Commissioner Hill is going to speak on his behalf and explain that.
Okay, I didn't, did I speak up?
You might need to ignore the microphone.
All right, she's going to move over to the microphone so y'all can hear her.
Thank you.
What this is for is the jail offices have expanded. We have need of more wireless access points. We have created an office for the corrections sergeants to do their paperwork and their online training. And there is no, uh, cabling for computers or power. So, this has nothing to do with the camera system. This has to do with, we have grown some of our offices and we do not have the access we need in order for those offices to be productive. So, this will put in wireless access points, cabling for, uh, hard-wired computers, electricity, that sort of thing.
Has this went through property?
Uh, no, sir.
I'd ask you to go through property. So, we don't have to wait. I know we all need phone, but I'd like to sit here, then go through property. So, we didn't, we're not, we actually get into. I don't know if the, when we build these other parts of the jail, will it be something that can be done at that time, at that money or, or what? So, I would like to ask to, to care before property.
All right, let property ask a question.
Let property ask a question. Uh, Mr. Plant, stand by. Ms. Rochelle, when you go in to the jail, there's a room to the right and says lieutenant's office. Is that where, where the tower? When you go in, the way I normally go in, the tower, looking at the tower. There's a, where you go around the laundry on the right. Is this where we're talking about putting it?
Um.
Office on the right?
Okay, uh, the office on the right is the jail administrator's office.
Has nothing to do with this? This, this paperwork that you hold?
Uh, part of it will be for the jail administrator's office.
All right, thank you. We are getting a separate bid from that from Stanley.
Okay.
So that has been addressed with property when I was there. Stanley and Mr. Williams had addressed that in front of me. So they are giving us a bid for that, if that helps the situation.
Yes, sir, I was unaware of that.
Okay.
Does that mean that we need to hold off on this till next month?
I'd like to table that if that's, if that's susceptible to sheriff's department.
Um, I can't answer for the sheriff.
Do you make a motion to table this?
I'll motion to table this for further information.
I second that motion.
Did you get that? Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. Voice vote. Does everybody vote aye?
Aye. Aye.
I think you better do a roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, just to be clear. Uh, roll call, please.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hickson.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Darryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Angie Hearn.
I just want to make sure this is to table, correct?
Correct, yes, it is to table.
Yes, my vote is yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Kalaia Dai.
Yes.
Norman Fraser.
Yes.
Gary Furr.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion passes.
Motion carries. So we've tabled that. Next one on the agenda is number 29. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $15,797 from the jail courthouse workhouse litigation tax reserve account in order to proceed with the purchase and installation of the new 100 gallon water heater slash boiler system in the jail building.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hicks. Seconded by Mr. Fraser. Have any questions?
Is this new money?
Approved by property?
We take bids on this.
Yes, this is old information that we've been waiting for, for at least three months. We approved the contractor two months ago and we're waiting for funding.
New money?
Condition of the boiler now, still working?
Last word I had, we got rusty water coming out of it. They're expecting it much better soon.
Any more questions?
Budget up for it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hickson. Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Darryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Kalaia Dai.
Yes.
Norman Fraser.
Yes.
Gary Furr.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Number 30 on the agenda. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $12,000 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget within the sheriff's jail budget in order to cover additional expenses in both custodial supplies and water and silver increases due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hicks.
Question.
Motion.
Seconded by Commissioner.
Discussion. Can anyone tell me if any of this stuff, kind of stuff is going to be reimbursed?
I was going to, you just took the word right out of my mouth. Is that anything that we have related to COVID-19 we're at least going to treat if we cannot apply this to a FEMA disaster claim? So FEMA will reimburse at 75%.
Thank you.
So this is still classified as new money?
Right now it is.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I just wanted to state, um, I know this seems like an awful lot of money, but since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, what TDOC recommended as far as our cleaning protocols, we have probably gone through more cleaning supply in two and a half months than we go through in a year. Also, the approved types of materials to clean with are things that normally we could buy with no issue, suddenly disappeared. And I wouldn't quite call it price gouging. But in order to find the materials we needed, we were having to buy from vendors we don't normally use at prices that we didn't normally pay. So it just, the price tag was more than what we had anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
It looks good.
It looks good.
Come in for a plan, I didn't hear every place. Is there money out of how to deal if this ain't showing what this is? Is it $12,000 exactly for, for the buy this stuff with?
Yes, it is, it's $12,000.
Do we not have any idea what we're buying? Chlorox, Torox, I mean, there's none that much. I, I have no idea, I just like the, what we buy.
I do not have that at the moment, but, um, I can certainly forward the mayor's, the mayor's office pays our invoices. So they get copies of all of our invoices. Um, I do not have an itemized list and a big part of that money is water and sewer.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Plant?
Well, it, I didn't know it did. I know we were buying more with water and sewer, that's $12,000. That's not a high dollar to me to say yes, only if I say where it's going. I, I should say that, uh.
Well, it wasn't just water and sewer, it's also custodial supplies, like their cleaning supplies and stuff that they have to disinfect the jail with.
Yeah, I knew you bought chlorox, but I don't know whether you buy to disinfect the jail with it, be $12,000. I guess I'm just asking for the money strictly for that. I, I just felt like we'd see there's $12,000 with chlorox or what?
It's not just.
She will not say.
No, it's not.
I didn't, I didn't even mention that.
It's not just chlorox, she said. Commissioner Hicks?
When she sends her bill in to get her money back from, she's got to turn in all the receipts and everything. So the mayor's office should have, you know, receipts and stuff if anybody wishes to get them.
If any of you didn't hear, Commissioner Hicks, he says that the receipts that she buys all these products with is on file at the mayor's office. If anybody wanted to check those receipts and see what is actually wrong.
Yeah, try to buy chlorox now.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anybody else with any questions? Okay, now going to take.
I have Tommy, I, you know, I, this is the first, uh, you know, I'm a pretty, any fan to look at that airport. You need airport before you put approved something.
Did everybody hear what she said, Ms. Powers? She said she would like invoices before anything's approved.
And is there any other, is there any other accounts since this, since this is relating to COVID-19? Is there any other accounts that we can pull my funds out of instead of adding to the sheriff's budget, that's where about the dollars?
We, we have gone through the sheriff's budget, top to bottom, and actually has made some recommendations. And, I mean, we have pulled where we needed to pull, transfer where we needed to transfer. But, but pretty much this is going to have to be new money. This is going to have to be an appropriation. Because what wasn't also a factor is that when we did our budget last, you know, July 1st, we didn't necessarily account for this rise in prisoner population. I believe that the sheriff has taken additional prisoners over the course of a year. And so that has also hit our utilities and water account. And so that's why we basically under budgeted last July 1st. But we didn't know how many prisoners we would be taking and all that. So that was a hard, uh, hard call at the time. The question will be whether we can turn the water portion in for a FEMA claim. We can to supplies, but we may not be able to, to get all the water. We'll have to come up with some allocation, maybe from the jails to say, hey, this is how much more water we're using as a result of the additional cleaning requirements and sanitation requirements.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
What, Commissioner Hicks?
This passed unanimously in budget.
Commissioner Hicks said that this passed through budget. Any other questions?
Fire, uh, Fire Department District.
Okay, Commissioner Furr.
Uh, question. The money that is being collected for these state prisoners from these other counties and other areas, is that money going into general fund or sheriff's department?
General fund.
General fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to respond to that. I'm going to add a couple of facts for everybody and decide how you're going to vote on this resolution.
We might want to move up here, so.
The mayor mentioned state prison money. I'm looking at audited number here. 2018 audit number for state prisoners were $195,000. We asked the sheriff to take in more state prisoners to increase that dollar amount. Last count with Sherry Beasley's office, the trustee, the sheriff, the jail had brought in $566,000 this fiscal year. We've still had three, maybe four months, and that was, that was a month ago. It may be in another payment system we've had this conversation. That's quite a bit of increase. I'm also looking at their budget, the jail budget. Under normal year without any virus, the 2018 audit for water and sewer was almost $23,000. So that was the year we had $195,000 state prisoners. Now, the mayor mentioned to you we got a rise in state prisoners. We bring in $566,000. We're, we're set, we're set to bring in $700,000 of that before the fiscal years over with. So that being said, I'm going to give a floor thought, just give y'all one more thing about.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
How many state prisoners do we have?
I don't know that number, sir.
How do we know which figures are right?
Can I say that, can I respond to that? I'm getting my figures from the trustee's office, Sherry Beasley. She's averaging about $42,000 a month, state money going to the general fund.
Did you not know how many prisoners, state prisoners were there?
Ask me that.
How many state prisoners do we have?
We have enough state prisoners.
You don't got, you ain't got a number?
Divide that by 40 and you'll get about an average of it.
I don't know how many's in there, I don't want to have that figured.
And you know, and that's something I, we've talked about, how we can improve our reporting process. I would like for, once we get this budget out of the way, is to have y'all a monthly financial report. I think, uh, the law enforcement committee would probably, would help us to start asking, have a little data sheet of what we would like on a monthly basis. You know, how many state prisoners, how many prisoner box? And those are, those are avenues that I think we can improve on in maybe the next fiscal year and maybe work it through the committee functions, uh, for that requirement. But right now, you know, I think all you have in there now are state prisoners, is that it?
I don't know, sir. I'm afraid I don't deal with that aspect of, of the jail. I have no idea if the sheriff were here, he could answer.
Unfortunately, sheriff, I'm here to answer that.
Let me, I'm going to add one more piece of conversation. Thanks to the increase in excess tax from the banks and thanks to the increase what we're getting for camp state prisoners, is the reason we're not going to have a property tax increase this year.
That's right.
I do in the poll.
Okay, we need to move on and take a roll call vote on this. Um, you know, if you wish to vote yes, vote yes. If no, vote no. Roll call vote, please.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Janet Hickson.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Darryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Aye.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Kalaia Dai.
Yes.
Norman Fraser.
Yes.
Gary Furr.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Vickers.
Yes.
Ward Plant.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Number 31 on the agenda. It's a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $22,926.07 from the jail courthouse workhouse litigation tax reserve account in order to make necessary building improvements due to the COVID-19 pandemic and budget these set funds within the county buildings budget.
Motion.
Motion by Ferguson. Let's get a second first, Mr. Plant. Do we have a second? Has this gone before property?
No.
No, it has not gone before property.
Table it.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Hicks?
Does property, has property even had meetings? I know law enforcement, we ain't been having meetings because of the COVID-19. So we can't break nothing before any meeting, because the only one meeting is budget.
Have been canceled except for the budget meeting for the last few months, but keep that in mind.
Okay.
I say table it and give us the, the fact that we look at what they got. I mean, I have no idea.
Commissioner Hill?
But he, he can submit on, on a paper, a spreadsheet or something, whatever he want done to the mayor's office if, if one that, leave for the next meeting, read, see what it's needed for.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
Uh, I just have a question. Um, the annex will be the old electric. What offices are we putting in there? I'm just curious.
Agricultural extension and commodities.
Will that qualify for the jail litigation tax fund?
Currently, as long as it's a courthouse annex.
Okay.
Which people, we can argue the verbiage of that, but we have talked with the, uh, the archers and they say as long as we can consider it courthouse annex.
Then it qualifies.
That they're not going to question.
Thank you, sir.
The one thing about these expenses are, this is these glass partitions that we have put up all throughout the courthouse and planned to put up because that extension has to be ready by July 1st. They're going to move the month of June. And, uh, so, so, and it's COVID-19 related. So we are trying to get this all encompassed with our FEMA claim.
Yes, sir, I, I was just curious what offices we're going to currently be in.
Two questions.
Commissioner Fraser?
Two questions. The county buildings budget, uh, well, the first question is, is what's the county building budget? When you say, well, I mean, it says, you know, within the county building budget, how soon does the fund do operate?
Yeah, are you talking about the transfer from or?
The what you're going into.
Okay, right. Well, that's just the proper place to probably put this particular money. You know, it's, it's not necessarily a capital expenditure. It's, it's, if we're following maintenance and repairs or any type of county enhancement.
And this goes through your office?
Right.
Thank you.
I would like to ask a question too. Uh, I would like to see an itemized statement for that $22,000 myself before I actually vote on it. That's just my opinion.
And I'm in agreement with that. I, I would have thought there would have been more detail, you know, in the package, but obviously that's. I, I would have thought there would, would have been more detail, you know, in the package, but obviously that's all.
Do we need to table this till next month?
Who did not, not meet the deadline, we need, who's, who's doing this work?
May I speak on this? Uh, yes, just a minute, Ashley. Mr. Frazier wants to know who's doing the work.
Table Hancock.
Okay, this resolution consists of many different things. So we have individual invoices for the glass partitions. We have a combination of multiple invoices. Um, we've got, uh, the internet and IT installation that is being ran from the courthouse to the annex building. This appropriation consists of many different things and multiple estimates for invoices. Um, Ms. Ashley, is there some reason why we couldn't have been given an estimated itemized invoice on this? Um, it's not just one invoice, it's multiple. Okay, but still, we would like to see where the $22,000 is going. I know there's only two offices, offices in the courthouse that I see downstairs that's got partitions already put up. The other offices haven't even got theirs. And I'd like to see how much that cost myself for that, for those petitions because, you know, that is not anything that, that I would think would be very hard to build. I think just about anybody could build those frames that you put that, um, lost my friend, I thought, yeah. The glass, yeah, the plexiglass. I think, you know, those frames should be very easy to build and I don't know, see, I have no idea, nobody does. How much those cost and how much we're going to pay for those. I can definitely, I can send you the individual invoices, but we do have invoices for the offices downstairs plus, um, construction for offices upstairs. They will also be getting them. This appropriation includes those offices upstairs. The total for the installation of the glass partitions is around $5,000 and that would include the court upstairs.
Can I make a motion to table this till next month?
Yes, you may. We have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second by Commissioner Hall?
Question?
We have any other questions?
One. Did I just understand Ashley to say the petitions were for this courtroom also when the court starts back?
Uh, Ashley, Commissioner?
No, sir, not the courtroom, the court offices. The room, I told them, I'm writing water, his office is going to be having glass partitions installed.
Thank you.
And the reason we went this month with this is because we didn't want to really hit this in the budget. Next month, we're going to be looking at doing the budget, so. Uh, but if we can hold on, I mean, no wonder, they know we're going to get paid later on down the road. Uh, but we can't wait for the next budget year, so we need to, we need to come in with a commitment. In June, uh, we'll get you off of detailed invoices and that's our oversight. I, I do agree that there's a lot of moving parts in this and we probably should have included that in the package, we didn't. Uh, but this is comprehensive of multiple offices. We did also, uh, solicit three different vendors, uh, and this was the one at Paris was the best vendor. And also time, you know, it's like putting this in in October doesn't do us any good when you're in the middle of your COVID-19 crisis in the months of March and April. So that's why we had to act and get these up now while we, while we're in this posture that we're in with COVID-19.
I want to make it clear, I'm not, I'm not against the petitions at all. I, I want to protect our county employees and I also know the need to protect the customers as they come in the offices. But I just think that's a lot of money myself for something that could have been done, I think, by a local person. I think we have plenty of local carpenters or anybody that could have built those for a lot less money myself. He can mind you, for this $22,000 is not just for the glass partition. Okay, I understand, that's why we needed something broke down so that we would know for sure where this money is going to.
Just a couple of things about those, you know, about the numbers too, about invoices, I'm pretty sure they are. It's just about the thing about the partitions, obviously all county governments, of course, this is Henry County, I don't know if you've heard of it right now. Well, don't be surprised if some of those materials are also higher, certainly higher than what you expect. Because I mean, in our minds, we think all partitions should cost a lot, some plexiglass should cost a lot. But those materials are being used across the entire state right now and the costs are much higher than what you would expect.
And there's a shortage.
There is a shortage.
It's a shortage being used up, so the price may not be much higher for that. Don't forget, it's required to be done right now, so the county, every county is done later. Right now, it's going to be higher than what you expect.
Yeah, I think they.
Those are, just expect that.
They did try to go out and find, Greg did try to find some of the cheapest.
And they just couldn't find it, you know, everybody wanted something. The other time, it was, so the labeling tool was very restrictive.
Just like the microphone ones that are where they speak, they're on backorder to office for every county clerk's offices or venue.
And you're going to expect that in the department. I know there's like, like I said, a farmer, a lot of people would build that maybe cheaper, but they may not be on the list that we used a year ago in our offices. I mean, some of these dealers, they might not, might not be able to use them as a, not on certain lists, but useful.
Commissioner Hicks?
Is there any way we could separate this next month if we both to table this? To where we know what is for COVID and what is for IT on building across the, the way there? That way we can separate, you know, we know what's being spent for the COVID-19 versus the IT stuff for that building down there. Well, ultimately, it still comes through to the same amount. That'd help us understand it better. And we possibly could, I don't, well, it's already in this resolution, so if we bring back, you know, from tabling it, we kind of probably ought to keep it at home, but we'll have the invoices where you can tell either or. The thing about the IT and the tabling is that ag extension has to have some type of IT and so that was also important.
I can tell you exactly how much the IT part of that is, it's $3,500. It was the cheapest site to find and we went with the lowest that would, because otherwise it was going to be thousands of dollars a month for internet down there to have good gigabit internet, state of Tennessee wanted. So we figured we'd use the fiber optic connection that's already in the courthouse and just beam it over there. It's $3,500 one-time fee, is going to solve all the problems and it had future improvement built in.
So we've got $5,000 for partitions and $3,500 for, for that.
The $5,000 was just for installation, it's not for the materials.
Well, let's vote on it.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second, so let's take a roll call vote, please, on, on the table. Okay, we're, we're voting to table resolution number 19.
Rochelle Hill?
No.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
No.
Kalia Die? Kalia Die?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
No.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
No.
Ward Plant?
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I do, change mine to no.
Anyone else? 12 yes and 6 no. Motion carries to table. Number 32 on the agenda, resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $2,500 from the unsigned fund balance within Fund 172 Community Development Industrial Park and budget to the trustees commission in order to have sufficient funds for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion?
No.
Ferguson? And Mr. Plant, did you vote?
I might have voted.
Okay, it has to be someone inside the courtroom, Mr. Plant, to make.
I don't think so.
I said it before you did.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hill? Any discussion?
This is classifying new money.
Yes, it is new money. Any, any questions? Roll call, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Mary Powers? Ms. Powers? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Die?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward, Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Ms. Mary Powers, are you there?
I believe her battery's gone dead. We'll mark her down as a pass.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda are the notaries, so we have four, Ray Smith, Jordan Davis, Nikki Davis, and Misty Davis.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Patton, second. All in favor of vote, aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now, do we have any other business?
Can I say something? I know a lot of them thinks that that was plexiglass, but that's tempered glass, it's real glass, it's in the things. So it does cost a little more, I was just going to bring that up.
I'm glad you did, and I didn't know, you said it's meant speakers?
Yeah, it has speakers, but they're on backorder till Au- August because everybody wants to get them, so I didn't want to clarify that.
I'm glad you did, because when I looked in there, I didn't see that at all, so that wouldn't make it.
Yeah, and it's tempered glass, so. Yes.
But that's easier to see for two.
Yeah.
Clear, uh, Commissioner first.
We've got to do the insurance.
Okay.
So.
Can I say something?
Commissioner Hill?
Um, the motion that we tabled, I just want to say that, you know, when this pandemic hit, the need to make all of these improvements for the safety of both our employees and the public was quick and necessary, and I honestly think that the mayor's office did everything they could to get the best deal for the county, and I really wish we would have approved this for the protection of our employees and the public. I, I know that's a lot of money, but I really, I, I feel bad that we tabled it, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Hicks?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules so we can vote on the insurance.
Okay, do we have a second to suspend?
Second.
Commissioner Ferguson, to suspend the rules to vote on the county's health insurance.
Well, let's go ahead and follow the insurance, but I will address your concern.
Okay, that's okay. So we've suspended the rules, now we need a motion?
A roll call to suspend, yeah.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Die?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries to suspend the rules.
Motion to go with Benefits Inc. and go to second.
Hill, I will second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and seconded by Commissioner Hill to, for our insurance to go with Benefit Inc.
Just question, question.
Okay.
I asked, asked the chair of insurance, am I allowed to vote for this?
Oh.
No.
Thank you.
So I'm now allowed to vote for it either? I'm an employee of the sheriff's office, it will affect you personally.
It would affect you personally, so no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Frazier has a conflict of interest.
Okay.
So does Commissioner Hill.
Do we have any other questions about this insurance? Does everybody understand? Okay, if not, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Conflict. Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Die?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Okay, motion carries on the insurance.
Uh, I would like to say that I'm on the insurance committee and I was the one out of town and did not get to attend the meeting, but I would like to thank them for the hard work that they did because I know prior to that, we had been meeting and, and it was long and lengthy and we were struggling with it, so I'd like to say thank you to the insurance committee.
Thank you for being on it.
Okay, now, the mayor would like to speak in reference to what, um, Commissioner Hill just said.
There's two issues, uh, we probably need the three-star letter, did y'all get the three-star letter? It was emailed to you through a fiscal string. That is something we do need to vote for and approve because we are on a state deadline there. It's basically a formality where we just state that the big county fiscal string, we put on the kind of a budgetary statement to the state of Tennessee and, and it keeps us, uh, with our three-star qualification with state Tennessee, so we do need.
Can we make a motion to do that?
You're, you're fruitful for that and you'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion for the three-star.
Do we have to suspend the rules or we do that?
We've already suspended the rules.
Thank you.
We have a motion about Commissioner first and a second by Commissioner Miller back there in the back. Do we have any questions, any?
We've got to have it, otherwise we won't be a three-star.
Okay.
Three-star saves us money big time.
There's no more questions, roll call vote, please. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Die?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Do we have any other business? Mayor Lashley?
Uh, going back to that resolution number 19, uh, I share the concerns of Commissioner Hill. I do think we need to re, rebook this right now, and the reason I say that is, uh, we're already past our budget deadlines to have all purchases made. Keep in mind, in this next 45 days, we are going to be in closeout mode for the county. If the next time we have to address this is June 15th, when, when our meeting's going to be, it is really going to put some hindrances on Ashley to close out the books by Ju- by June 30th day because payments have to be submitted, cash, you know, and, and we have to have all final deals pretty much in play within the month of June, get them paid and get it closed out. So again, it's like you said, this covers multiple, multiple purchases. Uh, it's all related to the COVID-19 or the annex building. We have got estimates on some, so we don't actually have a final bill or invoice on some of that, and some of this work is still ongoing. So if you've noticed, you go into some of these offices, they're still incomplete, so the work is still ongoing. So right now, all we have, what we're basing this resolution off of is an estimate, or many of these are off estimates and not invoices yet. That will come after completion of it. But we're basing it on probably maybe a little increase in the estimate just so that we're not underbudgeted on this. So anything that's not spent, like the, the, the real number may come out to $21,000 at the end of the day and we'll just return back to the, to the general fund while it's not spent. But I'm afraid if we do go to June, we're probably going to put, we're probably going to put accident or some.
Is this work in process now?
Yes, it's currently, if you'll go to some of these offices, they're not completed. It is a work in progress.
So we already have someone set up to do all of it?
Table Hancock, and I said we went through multiple vendors and, uh, demand for, the, demand for the services, finding a contractor that could do it, but also needing the proper qualifications, uh, to have something viable for the whole.
I'd make a motion, we take it back off the table and vote on it.
Do we need a motion to suspend first and then?
We're already suspended.
I will second that motion, please.
Okay.
It's got to be somebody that voted yes.
Oh, sorry.
Somebody that voted yes to table. Did you vote to table, Mr. Patton?
I remember, we got it.
Thank you.
I voted to table it, so I'll, so I can make a motion.
I voted to table, so I'll, so I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion and bring it up.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Melton and signed by Commissioner Hopper to bring it off the table to reconsider. To reconsider. Yes. To reconsider Resolution nineteen.
Last year, or last, three years ago, we learned the hard way.
Yes.
We wasn't doing that right.
Do we have, anybody want to discuss it or bring it up?
I'll just make a comment, I fully support what the mayor was saying, because we've got a major health issue down here also.
I would like to say too, that I'll change my vote this time, because I wasn't aware that it wasn't just plexiglass, like Ms. Malien said, it's tempered glass, and it also, she says it's going to have a speaker, so that they can hear the people, which I'm sure that makes it quite a bit more expensive. So, I wasn't understanding, but again, it would be better if we had an invoice here, something showing us what we're actually paying for and describe what we are paying for.
We did shuffle around, read other places trying to get it cheaper.
And I'm in full agreement with that. I mean, and you know what, another thing, our hands are a little tied right now, because we haven't had committee meetings. We probably could have flushed this out if we'd had our committee meetings this month, but we didn't, and that, again, that's a learning lesson for...
Commissioner Hill?
I have a question. How many courthouse or other employees are currently not protected with a glass barrier? I mean, with how many offices, and how will that delay us protecting them with this glass? I don't think we need to wait another month.
And right now, the offices that are being done are the ones where there's a hard set counter in place. The harder ones to do, like St. Rainwater's offers, Tim Burris's office, is currently kind of working with, we're having to find the right design for them and what we can place on their counters. They have a different counter system than the other offices, so, but they have, that is in the estimate, so those will be addressed. It may be more of a portable system, but all these systems are also, because we're looking at it, we ever redo the courthouse, I mean, these aren't systems that we just tear out and throw away. They're going to stay, you know, and, but it's also going to be a staple, that if this county commission ever pursues anything with any building going forward, we're only going to see more of this coming in the future, not less of it. So, we're going to have to, just like the ADA requirements, we're probably going to begin configuring most of our offices similar to this health protection video.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
I'm there to vote on myself. No, then I make a motion, I think that that's the true topic at the time, and saying that, I didn't really understand what all had been done. I heard him say the jail there, but I, I didn't understand, it's hard to hear on the phone, it's everything.
I understand.
Yeah, I think I didn't have that.
We understand, Commissioner Plant, I wasn't aware either of everything that was involved in it. Commissioner Hall?
Question, let's go.
Well, Commissioner President had his hand up.
I share your compassion for this resolution being passed. I remind everybody that this resolution fails. Twelve votes to six, we need more than one or two or three people to change their mind on this resolution. I've listened to the argument, I've been listening to this argument for about two years now. What it boils down to, do we trust this mayor's administration? Do we trust the mayor's office? I haven't been given any reason not to trust him. I hear you, Paul.
It didn't fail, it was tabled, though.
It was tabled, but it failed.
Twelve to six, right? Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we're going to have a roll call vote.
This is just to remove it off the table.
This is to take it off the table. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren? Yes. Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers? Angie Hearn? Angie Hearn?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Our members voted yes, so it passed.
I make a motion that we vote for it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Frazier and signed by Commissioner Bickers to have a roll call vote for this resolution again. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Okay, the resolution has now passed. Now, do we have any other business?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
In our last meeting, we tabled a resolution, two hundred and two oh three sixteen national to this month. Now, are we going to just keep doing this, or why don't we just table this indefinitely until, you know, we decide to do it? But, keep bringing it up every month is kind of crazy.
What is that resolution about, Mr. Lashley?
It was about the funding of the IT director, I think.
No, it's to appoint me as the Deputy EMA Director and funding it. Well, to clarify, it's not appointing him Deputy EMA Director, it's appointing him a deputy within the EMA Communications, and actually paid him. And as we've talked about within our EMA structure, we don't really have a solid structure. We've got one man with sixteen thousand lives in his hands. That makes basically a part-time salary, and we know that, you know, Mr. Richard Key doesn't, he's not the Energizer Bunny, and he's not operating on a twenty-four-seven schedule. So, since we have, like I said, just so you understand, the EMA is under my purview. It is a department of the mayor, okay? Whether we fund it or not is your decision, but I can appoint anyone I want to a particular position, put them in a place that guarantees us a better reaction or response of the emergency process. I could take someone from the community, say, listen, I want you head of logistics, I want you, and I have that authority over Richard Key. We're actually helping Richard Key here, because he's one man, we saw with tornadoes, he can't be everywhere, and I do believe our EMA structure is much like our solid waste of water, that there is a need for it. Is there a full-time need? No, I don't think, we don't have the money to run a full-time EMA department, and so we're probably have to go with a part-time director or a part-time paid salary. Twenty-six thousand dollars is what it costs for our EMA director, of which we get thirteen thousand back in a grant, okay? So, in a way, it costs the county thirteen thousand dollars for Mr. Richard Key's services. But, we do need to prepare for tomorrow's disaster, and we need certain mechanisms. We need a deputy of logistics, we've, Mr. Tim Bickers has come on and helped us during this process with COVID-19. He has been stellar. He's done that for free. He's okay. We probably need a public information officer, meaning if a disaster happens, you need that spokesperson who goes before or educates the public, educates the media. And what I saw, where our first, first need was, was in communications. Our code, initiating our code red alerts, keeping our Facebook page updated for information, weather updates, it's multifunctional, and honestly, since you've assumed that role of Deputy of Communications, our response, I mean, y'all can give your code red alerts on very timely, anytime we have threatening weather, I mean, it's constantly being alerted, and that's part of this process. So, what my proposal was, was to appoint him. I appointed him Director of Communications for EMA, the Deputy of Communications. That's his appointment. Until it's relinquished, he is going to be the Deputy of Communication. Really, what that request was for is whether y'all want to compensate him for something, because right now, we're getting a steal, and we cannot continue to financially abuse him and have him, I mean, we get a lot of services from him for what he provides. All of this tech, our Facebook live, look at how much we have improved our communication systems countywide. I want to give him that credit for it, and I believe he needs a raise for that. Now, do we want to fund it through EMA? That was my proposal, and the reason I don't want to up his IT director pay is because he may quit that role one day. He says, look, I can handle this, but I can't handle that. So, we would still need to go and find that communications director for EMA and probably pay them for that full-time service. I mean, I wanted to keep them separate, because we may not always have the same person in that role, and I'm also going to probably propose next year, that with these other deputy positions, Deputy of Logistics, Public Information Officer, that we pay them per occasion. So, if we have a tornado on the ground, and we've got, we're mobilizing our forces, you know, then we just simply pay them per event, and it doesn't have to be that much. But, the communications runs twenty-four-seven, the notifications, the updates, whatever, and so that's why I felt like that particular position needed a little bit more than just a, you know, you're activated on occasion.
I'd like to suggest we just put that off to some other time. We don't need to run this meeting that long, just to discuss that. If we're going to talk about it, we're going to spend some time on it, because I got some input.
And that's why I had to bring it up.
I make a motion that we just leave it tabled, and if he wants to talk to me about it, we can catch after the meeting.
I wanted to be safe and table it for when... Yeah, just indefinitely until we, and that's why I was actually saving it more for the budget, and I wasn't going to bring it back up, because I said, you know, we're getting some free services through June thirtieth. By July first, we need to think of whether we want to prove that as a budget line item for the insurance, and that's why I had to bring it up.
It's being discussed in budget, it's being looked at in the budget now for the coming year or so.
Commissioner Hicks?
In budget, we actually put more money in that line, unless we all vote to take it out, there's more money in there than what the mayor originally asked for before that was issued.
Okay, Commissioner Bickers?
I would just like to say, I would like to see us try and help Scott. This man right here is working hard for this county, he's very well qualified, he's doing outstanding job, he's getting ready to save us probably hundreds of thousands of dollars when it comes to law enforcement and the camera system we're putting in, the sheriff's office over there, he's doing a fine job, we're not taking anything away from Richard Key or his responsibilities, and having that man on the job very well to save somebody's life that's in this room right now. And I know there's people watching Facebook, I just want to say that, and I talked to Scott about this, he is not the Deputy EMA Director. I would, in the absence of Richard Key, I would pretty much be your EMA Director, but it doesn't need him. We don't need to think about that, but we need to set him in charge, and I'm going to leave that up to the community to kind of weigh in on a little bit more. I'm not going to make any irrational moves, but I am going to set the EMA department up as it sits. That next disaster is just a date ahead, and we need to make sure that we're prepared for emergency response.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
If I may have a vote?
Yes, you may.
Again...
You got a motion on the table for what?
Go ahead and finish this out.
Well, now, it's all, he might have motioned to table it, but it's already tabled.
You never wrong. No, it's not, it's tabled through this month. It need to just have come up again.
It just hasn't been seconded, and it will fail to be brought back to the...
Why don't we just table it indefinitely, like he said, and I'll second the motion?
It's currently, is, did we postpone it for this month?
We have tabled it for one month. We tabled it to bring it back up this month.
Okay.
Okay. So, so are you making a motion now that we...
I made a motion that table it indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
And I second the motion.
Is that correct, Mr. Patton, you want to make a motion to table it indefinitely? Is that what you said?
Who, me?
Yes.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Right before that, you had a motion to table the resolution indefinitely.
I thought, yeah, yeah, let's take it indefinitely.
And do we have a second on that?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Hopper seconds that.
No, we just need to vote.
Yeah, okay, now, let's take a vote.
We can do a roll call on that one.
Yes, roll call. Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higdon? Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Higgs?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Are we, are we voting to adjourn?
Kalia Dye?
I'm a companion everywhere.
Kalia Dye?
She adjourned.
Kalia, are you still there?
I've seen her, she'll have to be passed.
She's not there.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
He went to sleep.
Fifteen, yes, and three passed.
Motion carries now.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
Motion carries, and you have one more thing? I have one more thing.
One last important announcement is that, and of course, Facebook, a lot is watching, next month, very important month, I would encourage all commissioners to attend your budget meeting, okay? So, if there's anything to weigh in for ahead of time, they're going to discuss it. Just the people who are watching this county commission in the last twenty-one months has done a phenomenal job. The budget committees have worked hard both, both of these years, and the insurance committees have worked hard, law enforcement, everybody stepping up to the plate, I commend all of you. This is how we want to work, and so, my hats off to the insurance committee on what they've been able to do for the county, and the budget committee on what they're getting ready to do for this county, and, but we're going to have open meetings next month, okay?